It's a pretty heavy decision and wording to me that that's what they're going to do. But again, I don't want to tell you one way or the other. It's all good to have our discussion.
Well, I mean, we feel like they're more than likely, not guaranteed, but they're more than likely, we should probably propose that in the first reading. And if it's last, it's easier to manage that.
And I should have a true number, again, that won't be any readings, but after the county's meeting on the nineteenth, I don't know if that's time enough to get the change numbers to you for your first reading or not, but we should have a much better understanding about you maybe.
And I, okay, I guess one other point I will note, the utilities do pay a small portion of about thirty percent of the IT because we have employees that utilize the IT services. So the full IT won't be out of the general fund. And because we probably won't add it into public safety just because it's so small in that sense, but it won't be that full number, but we can make a...
Is it eighteen our half?
Yes, yeah, that's our half. Any other questions for Josh on that or on his budget in general? Okay. Was there anything else before we move into department specific? Okay. You have in your report or in your book, the chief has requested that we apply for and has applied for a COPS grant, which is a federal program. Do you want to explain that a little bit?
Yeah, it's a federal managed program. It's a three-year commitment, actually it's five-year commitment. Three-year commitment that you get funded for, but then a two-year commitment after that that you would agree to keep those officer positions employed. It's fifty thousand dollars per officer per year, so... No. Yes. Sorry. Yeah. Fifty thousand dollars off per officer per year for three years. So when you break it down, the total cost for three officers for three years is one million sixty-seven thousand ninety-four dollars. This covers in total the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand of that, the remaining is eight-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-ninety-four. They do ask that you increment that so that you absorb more costs as, or less, you absorb more costs as the grant goes, they absorb less. So I broke it down, their portion would be a hundred-and-forty-five thousand the first year, the second year would be sixty-two thousand change, and then the third year would be forty-one. And ours would be a hundred-and-four the first year, two-hundred-and-sixty-three the second year, and four-hundred-and-forty-nine the third year. I know that's a lot of numbers that I just threw at you, but basically you're kind of taking chunk seven, onboarding chunk seven a little bit more every year for three years. We do, would have five years to fulfill that grant. So even if you decided January one twenty-five you didn't want to start it, it could start January one twenty-six, once awarded. Ideally, I would take them earlier rather than later, but budgetary is up to you guys.
I will note two things, maybe three things. The budget reflects the complete and total salary benefits and all other expenses for that. What is not reflected is the one, is the grant dollars received. So that is not in the revenue column, but all expenses are in the expense column. So if the grant is awarded, then there would be additional revenue that would offset some of this. So if you go back to your budget surplus sheet, that would also help that because all of the expenses are included, none of the revenue.
So what you look, when you look at the first line there, that is all positions funded, additional of those two in your budget.
And if we don't get the grant, we...
That's up to you guys. The money's there.
Chief, I recall, frankly, well, but at a board works meeting last year, you were struggling with the state police issue.
Sure.
And you kind of negotiated with the board works to pay two positions and spread that money up to the assisting officers.
Correct.
So tell me, right, so how now we need two or three more?
Well, if you recall my words where I don't want to do this.
Yeah, I do recall that.
But this is what I feel like I have to do to retain officers. In talking to Captain Faznod, he is really in touch with my patrol officers. We know we kept two people from leaving, and it takes us a year to train those officers and get them going. This provides us with more of a cushion. So when people are like, right now, we have guys working twelve-hour shifts, three days in a row, with just mandatory, or minimum staffing on some weekends when we have people take a vacation, of four officers. So four officers are covered in the city for an entire twenty-four hours. That's really burdening and rearsome on them. Can we do it? Yeah. Are we doing it? Yeah. But as that continues and as that goes on, it is burdensome and it'll wear them down. The other thing I talked about was with housing development and with businesses coming in, and since I've talked about that, a hundred and two houses are starting to go up. The apartment complexes, there's sixty-some apartment complexes. They're multi-family housing, so you're looking at possibly two people, two breadwinners coming into that. That's more income coming into the city for taxes. We've had some businesses announce that they're coming in as well as giving some projects that I'm hearing whispers of that could be coming. Again, that's more revenue, that also increases patrol, that also increases call volume, that also increases traffic enforcement, traffic crashes. The more people you have, the more incidents there are.
Any answers to my question? Thanks.
Would you say our cost was the first year we got the grant?
Our cost the first year would be a hundred-and-four.
So what I, I propose is that we change that budget item to include that one oh four and not the complete salaries from those. And then if we don't get the grant, it forces you to come back and have that conversation versus just having the ability to say, well, they're there, we're gonna hire them. I'd rather us have the conversation. And then if we have to do, if we decide that that's what we want to do as a council, we can do an additional appropriation or something like that, but it forces that conversation to happen.
Sure, I'm gonna have that.
We can do that.
Just, so, do you want to put a hundred and four?
Take, take those additional salaries out and then just add the one oh four to the salary, or that gives us the money if we get the grant. If we don't get the grant, then we wouldn't be able to afford those two, those additional salaries. And it would mean that we'd have to come back to the council to get an additional appropriation added to them.
The, I don't think that's the right number, but...
The, I made a...
You what?
We already have the three officers already funded?
Two.
Two officers.
Yeah, the two, the two are in there fully, per thing. Yeah, it's, everything's in there from clothing to luggage, it's all about that. The issue that may rise with that, and that's why we do it however you want, is that we do have to pay out every dollar that they get. So just because we budget our one oh four, we still have to budget the two-hundred-and-fifty from the grant because we get the grant, so we have to be authorized to spend the grant.
What I don't want to do is just leave the salary in here to where now we've got the approval to buy, put two positions, it's in the budget. I want to force that conversation to happen with the council to approve those positions if the grant doesn't get approved. That's what I'm saying. Otherwise, it's just blindly in there and there's no, we can just hire them, right? That's what's going to happen. This forces that conversation to happen.
Yeah, not approved like, yeah.
Right, well, I know, but it forces, well, but you don't have to come back to the council, you go to the board works because the council already approved your budget. So you wouldn't have to come back to council. So I'm just trying to make sure we check that, catch that loop right where it forces the council to have to say they approve. Does that make sense?
What's your feeling on that grant? You feel it's a pretty done deal?
I had helped write the grant from our grant writer, her name I know. Yeah, yeah.
Whitney.
Whitney, yeah. She is really good. I feel there's, there's a lot of money out there available, but there's a lot of departments putting in. I think the sheriff's department put in for six positions out of it. So there's a lot of, a lot of agencies looking for that. Because not only is it for hiring new, but you could replace officers that left, that left. So there's some agencies out there that are trying to fulfill spots as well, or back there.
So just forcing the conversation.
So that hundred and four, one hundred and fifty salary is right?
Yeah, so what, I think what we'll do is we'll figure out how to represent that the most cleanly so that we don't have to go back and appropriate like all the different lines. But we'll figure out how to make it a requirement to come back.
Sure.
Is that council fair? Chief, anything else on here?
Uh, just a small changes on our shift differential. It's not where I want to be in the end, but I think it's a good start. Yeah, everything else is pretty much around... Around the, well, do you have any increases?
Okay. Any other questions for the police come back a couple times later on too? Nate, most of yours was bringing in, already discussed changes, anything else?
Yeah, just, we have, you see a significant cost expenditure in overtime last year. And if you recall, in those that were not on the council, we'd asked for double of what we had. So we were forty-five thousand, we asked for forty, another forty-five thousand to make it ninety, and we ended up spending over a hundred thousand dollars just in, this is just general fund. We spent another thirty-four thousand four-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars for Honda to cover the overage, which added a hundred and thirty-five dollars, or a hundred and thirty-five thousand nineteen dollars even in overtime. After that discussion, we recognized obviously there's a problem. President Kane, Council of Cleveland, Mayor, and my leadership team met to come up with ways to alleviate that. And it all stems from a fifty-three versus fifty-six hour work week to keep it somewhat simple. And these adjustments allow that to really almost eradicate the need to have substantial overtime. As you'll see, there's a fifty percent reduction going down to twenty-two thousand five hundred. Obviously, the longer we can retain staff and the longer we can remain fully staff, we don't have to dip into that overtime. And unfortunately, as somewhat of a misnomer, that overtime is not necessarily overtime as it was paying out comp hours that was due to them. We just did not have a, really a good place to take that, that money out. And taking it out of our salaries line item would have also been somewhat fictitious and we would have shorted ourselves in salaries as well as the money wasn't there. So that's kind of the account that it came out of. But we have to drastically decrease that this year. And then the only other thing is you'll see asking for a bump in the stipends for assistant chief captain lieutenant. I asked a lot of our leadership team, and I've made a, I try to make a conscious effort over the past three years in giving small incremental bumps to them for the jobs and for the work that they do. So those are the, on the general, those are the only really items of any great significant incentive or change.
So the chief brought up the fifty-three, fifty-six discussion, this has been what they've talked about for the last year. Julie's been very, very involved in that, Kevin and Jamie and I and Nate, Brian and others have met on it a couple times. And so what's presented in the, because you'll notice their salary number is higher than the standard rates. We are moving those three hours on the week into a, at the end of the pay period, they will get paid out for that time. So it won't be comp time, it won't be overtime time, it's work time. So we're going to move that from a fifty-three to a fifty-six hour pay work week, pay that time out just like they would in a normal paycheck. But then that moves their base salary up as well because it's based on fifty-six hours at the rate versus fifty-three, and then all the others follow that. So that's what's presented in the budget is moving to a fifty-six hour pay week versus the comp. We hope that will help with time off, et cetera, and also make sure that our base, our advertised base pay does increase by doing that as well.
Yep, and then the base, basically, we took, this year their salary was based, their base pay was based on a fifty-three hour work. So we took and added that fifty-six, that extra three hours week to that, and then that's what we added the three percent plus longevity to, to that fifty-six. Oh, yeah, it was right.
We understood it, but yeah, it's very confusing. So if you don't understand why, it's okay. It took us over a year and a half to fully grasp it as well.
Yeah, and it's not fair to the overtime budget, there's no way to, yeah, it's...
Correct, and that makes it look more...
This, this allows us to actually budget for and understand what we're paying, and otherwise it was just, yeah. We had several meetings on this.
Yeah, we're just gonna check it out.
Any questions on fire? Okay. Mark, really wasn't anything from the sanitation side that changed outside of the normal... Any questions from our... Yeah, he's good, flat, thank you. Okay. Zach and Sarah, again, mostly oriented towards keeping things flat. We, we did refund, you know, we're still funding the current envelope program that continues to build in popularity and usership. We, we did move some additional money into what we're labeling as the intern. Really, we currently have someone who's working in that position part-time who's helping our GIS department, and that's been working really well. And so what we've actually done is we, a couple of years ago, we added the GIS specialist. And with the kind of restructure we've done with Jeff Steele, that's been working out really well. So we're not funding that position again and moving it into this sort of part-time assistant role. We just labeled it intern because we have a project, or we have a job description for that, but it's really not necessarily like right now it's a part-time individual.
We did increase the salary for the part-time inspector due to the fact that with this new housing addition, a hundred and three homes, there's going to be a lot more inspections done, so that was the only reason for it.
Any questions for Sarah or Zach on that? MVH, the... One thing, the big changes down at the bottom with street materials, Mark, you want to talk, because MVH is kind of complicated anyway, but you want to talk about moving street materials there and how that allows some more flexibility? Page seven.
Okay. With the upcoming projects we've got, we've got to have match money. And so we're trying to move that into, or to my location that's available, we would be for the CCIF, fifty-fifty grant for the street, maybe. Also, we need to move, something comes up on the test pages. For example, we finished a project over on Central Avenue last year. We've got sixty, that's changed over on Great Falcon project, came out of the city last night. So this gives us the possibility to review that money as needed for anything to come along, but otherwise I don't need it.
One other thing that Mark and Amy and I are also currently working through, we are recipients of a pretty decent amount already, money, which is great. We're using that in our infrastructure investments, which is great as well. We may need to add even to that line item a significant amount of money in order to get the reimbursement. So we have to spend the money and then we get reimbursed from the state back, but we need a fund that we can do that with. So the MVH fund may be one of those that we use. So we may change that, we're, Amy and I have been working on it for the last few days. We may change that, but it's really a, because the money will come back, we have to spend it, but we have to be appropriated to spend it, and then we get the money back. And that fund has the cash carryability of that, but just as a heads up. Any other questions? There really isn't anything changed on page eight. That would be our overall purpose in streets, MVH, motor vehicle highway restricted funds, building demo fund without the loan. Fire contributions, and it hasn't had all the same. Any questions?
Is that appropriate amount for building demo fund? We're doing, I don't give that, Sarah.
I'm sorry, I'm...
The building demo fund, is that, are we okay with that?
The fifty thousand?
Yes.
Yeah, it's gotten better. Okay, page nine is lit fire and lit police. The, the big changes out of the police department, they have less cars that were needing to be replaced because of officers in training and miles driven kind of result. So that's reduced this year, which is great. We'll just put that money aside for next year and about everything else, stay pretty flat.
It's not the exact amount, Jamie, but it, you know, it's kind of close to maybe what we might be looking at.
We can figure out what that is. You know what the concept of...
I don't, yeah. Any questions about lit fire, police? Trash?
Just thinking about trades and that concept, if we, if we did hire additional officers, do we have vehicles for them?
Do you already have any? Trash is page ten. You want, Mark, you want to explain your truck?
Okay, when we adopted trash, we did replace four years ago. There was an amount of money that that was built up for a few months, so we didn't have a massive amount of money that came out of the expenditure. I believe right now we have a budget balance five hundred and some thousand. So what's in the expenditure right now, two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars for replacement of trash trucks. They really, I expect to see we're starting to wear it through the level of last, or high, I've been actually carrying a lot of talks. And I've been asking any quotes right now, would like to have a new contract before the end of the year and then with the budget, I would just be able to...
What's the lead time?
Somewhere between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and eighty.
Where do you get that from?
Having size, for sure, yeah.
Where are we first with it now?
We're there. They're, they're tough. I thought he told, is that a hundred and twenty or a hundred and eighty?
What size truck you were?
Probably a twenty-yard, single lax, we hope it ends with just over music for us and tight turning radiuses and we're never on the open road. So we're over a twenty-yard height of action and probably a western star, Jackson County, but that's a really big six mile, you know, sometimes. Yeah, with twenty-yard height of action.
Less trips in the line.
And the tighter we get up the less money we take out of our population.
Absolutely. Time gets over tight, I'll show you how to prime a truck.
We've got pretty death tax, considering we pay less than trash today, we can get it to pass.
They can pay, they can reach back and have a lather pushers on the road.
You know, every shop.
Okay, any other questions for Mark on that? We are also putting that as our analysis for, we're gonna run a brief analysis on that for our great study that the utilities are doing too. We'll see how that comes in. Any question? That's why there's the big budget item in there for this next year. Okay, next up's the Hummer fighter fund. Again, nothing really substantial, most are related to the changes in pay and longevity. Nate, any other thing on that?
Good roll of twenty-six, wins the contract, inspired or...
Yes. Yes. We planned to convene pretty much after this round, so...
Yeah, just what got...
Convene, put that team together. We already have some thoughts, plans, ideas, and then just getting that team together, you know, our strategy. Unfortunately, the contract falls odd at like budget, so it's one of those things, it's very...
Based on time specifically, you're, which is like April through March or whatever.
Yeah, very, we're, we're on a fiscal year, so it is very difficult when you try to plan a budget and that, so we're gonna try to get going after this to start working towards that.
Okay. Any questions? The next top half of the page is all the standard, it's the bond payments and bond funds that we put together the amount. The CCIF didn't change. The, I wanted, I put a big note in the memo, did everybody read that, about the fire truck and the KUM fire fund? We don't expect that until twenty-twenty-six. That is the latter truck that has been ordered, was ordered in twenty-three, we expect it in twenty-six. We will have to make a pretty significant payment on that, but the, you know, the KUM fire continues to carry revenues, and we're working on a pretty comprehensive strategy for that and then also for the discussions surrounding the rescue truck. I put a little bit more detail necessarily in your memo, but the important part is there's none of that in the twenty-five budgets, but we are very acutely aware that that will be affecting the twenty-six budget. But that's along with his way in.
That's a lot more than a hundred and eighty, Mark, for the time for a truck.
Yeah, I'd be glad if you could get that.
I think the promise you'd have, thanks.
Well, you're right.
I believe he was probably a lot better than twenty-three than what he was looking at now.
I, I think it were, it was supposed to be eighteen, didn't it? Two months, two years.
Yeah, it was, it was three, we gave about three years going into it, so it's about three to four years for our trucks now.
The KUM cap development fund has a couple of changes. We need some, we need a line item to maintain and take care of private parks, we've added that. We added some capital investment as well with the other items that we aren't doing, continuing this year. We've also added some money there to the park road fund. But the big one here is based on some feedback and some silence surrounding the discussion about airport authority, I have put together a proposal to add additional support to the airport from a fund outside of the airport. It is a division of city government, we have to make sure that it can operate and function, and their future, you know, is getting better. And Amy has been working tirelessly with them on their finances and the JC bank loans and those kinds of things. What is proposed here is that the CCD supports it at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars next year. You can, my recommendation would be if you decide to do that, that fund does balance, by the way, so it fits inside the funding mechanism. But it would be that you commit a hundred of the first one-twenty to debt repayment so that we can pay some money to the Jackson County Bank, and then the other twenty thousand can be put towards capital for matching dollars for the federal grant. And I think it would probably be in our best interest if we tied it to one or both of those things, or if you want it all to go one way, you can. They have an apron project that they're working on that requires a thirty-five thousand dollar local match. Amy, again, is working through the math on making that work. That's where I think the twenty thousand set aside for them to put towards that would be helpful, and then the hundred would go towards debt.
We purchased the airport in two thousand and seven, and I think our claim since then is it's not costing taxpayers or the city any money.
And when they went through that damn airport expansion, all they kept thinking about they were self-sufficient, self-sufficient, self-sufficient.
This, this is where it's gonna cost taxpayers money, and that's where I, I think that's something we kind of talk about. I'm not in favor of that.
Well, me neither. If they're not, if they weren't self-sufficient, maybe they should just spend some money. Why do they need to do that, or why do they need to buy more property?
I mean, that's been the selling point the whole time, is it's self-sufficient.
That's how they sold it, was that we, the, the taxpayers, anything, they were self-sufficient.
I think there's been a lot of years of discussion and actions that also have been somewhat outside their control, and Amy can probably get to this better than I can. When the grant was administered, when the ones were initiated... When the grant was administered, when, when the loans were initiated and the grants from the federal government were administered, that was two thousand nineteen, right? And then by time when they bought the land, the land process took longer than expected. And then they had to carry, they carried the debt, which generated interest. And then when the federal COVID money that was slated, the, the air, the generalized airport dollars that were slated in twenty-twenty were delayed, um, I think for about eighteen months, had to carry that, and then they've been carrying the debt. So it's mostly interest generated, and then there was some accounting work that was done where that was compounded. But it's not necessarily, like, they didn't control the COVID environment, obviously, they didn't control the interest period.
But every business in the world had to deal with that.
I understand that too. Unless, I mean, to be really frank, unless the airport is just not going to be a part of city government, we are going to have to have a conversation, and maybe we're not going to hammer it all up tonight, but.
How much debt do they have?
So the Jackson County Bank loan has a payout of the eight hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-four cents. Now, we have the two hundred thousand that I have asked to be additionally appropriated so that I can pay that off. It was, um, recorded in the wrong fund, so I need it to be additionally appropriated, so I can write a check out of that fund and pay it towards where it should have gone, which is the, the loan. And then there are two more, uh, there's a ten thousand and change and eleven thousand and change that I will be bringing to you. Again, as in another additional appropriation, same situation, so that they can go towards that. We have an AIP twenty-one final payout that we are still waiting on. That is about ninety-two thousand dollars that will go towards that. We have a land reimbursement for twenty-twenty-four of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-three that will go towards that. And then there is another land reimbursement that's coming in twenty-five of almost sixty-nine thousand dollars. And then we have budgeted for next year, um, twenty-four thousand in home payments.
What was the second? The first one was a hundred and what, what?
A hundred and fifty-eight, three hundred and thirty-three. So unfortunately, that leaves it with still a total of three hundred and eighteen thousand after all of those payments. That still needs to be paid. It's a three point four percent interest, and it's currently where it's sitting at eight hundred and eighty-four thousand, it's eighty, it's accumulating three, um, fifty-five a day in interest. But hopefully, once I can get that two hundred thousand towards the principal, that will help with the interest.
Maybe this is one where we can have a separate meeting to kind of talk about what their, what their revenue is, what are they making on fuel, hangar, animal, those kind of things, and understand their budget, understand what's going on, but I, I think the.
And I'm happy to.
Yeah, I, my understanding, it's been self-sufficient. They, they've been able to pay for those things. And, and the selling point is, is we're not taking anything away from the community to pay for that, right? It's been self-sufficient.
It's all they preach. In their meeting, it's all they ever preach. Yeah, I, I understand that, but, you know, the airports change. I mean, you know, when you go to the meetings, I mean, they've got a waiting list of nine people that are in hangers, they don't have any way to fund it. So there's a whole separate discussion that's got to be held regarding, you know, long-term thinking for the airport and how that's handled. You know, the apron is, you know, it's got, it's got added for the jets that are able to come in now. So there's, you know, it's changed from a long time ago. So definitely a separate discussion.
I, as I mentioned before, I'm happy to help facilitate that with three of you, if you'd like to meet with them independently, or if you want to meet with them, uh, to, to talk about that as well. Do we want to leave this here for now, and we can try to get that meeting in, in the next month or so?
I'd rather we strike it, and then we can have a meeting to decide if we're, we're back, but I, I'd rather strike than like.
Any, any other opinions on that?
Do we know what the, uh, the people using the airport, the people that are renting hangers, are they citizens of the city? Are they citizens of the county? Are they out of county?
Some of them are.
Some, some of them are, are they local?
Yes, there are local people.
Local people that have a.
Yes, absolutely. Um, I can't give you a percentage right off the top of my head, but, um, we do have people from Columbus.
But there are local citizens.
But there are local citizens, yeah.
I'm assuming Kevin missed it, uh, just all we've heard, there's some support.
Is there?
How much money we got to handle when we win?
Um, it depends on the size of the hangers, if they're not all, um, priced the same. So, um, I'd say the lowest price is a hundred and forty-nine a month, up to, I don't know, there's some people who have like three hangers, so. I mean, they have a larger bill, but they, I don't know.
I guess my question would be, are you generating more money to make your payments, loading nine new hangers?
I, I think that, I think that that's kind of fundamentally a different conversation than this, right? This is based towards, um, debt service and the opportunity to, to match federal dollars for features that are required for it to operate. Um, we, we should be concerned about what it is and, and who's using it, but it is also a tool in our economic development toolbox that is not completely unlocked because of its current position and status. Yes, I know there's been a lot of discussion over the last two decades about it. Um, but I also think we have to be attentive, you know, times change, things change, it changes. It is a part of city government. I don't think we can just lop it off unless you truly do want to just lop it off. Um, that still will come with the, the debt requirement. So I, I feel like there, there's fundamentally different conversations here in that, what can we do in the short time, short term, to?
How they need to answer those people, that how they can, I'm saying, my opinion is it's not going to cost the citizens of Greensburg a penny. And then this happens. And I know it's not you, Josh.
Yeah.
I know that. You go to these airport meetings, and all they kept saying, over and over, it's not going to cost the city taxpayers a penny. And what is, where are we at right now?
There's a discussion about.
There's a discussion about it's going to cost the taxpayers a Greensburg money. And if you pull the citizens of Greensburg, the vast, 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 vast majority of them could care less if they think up there.
I think we're, this, I still think it doesn't change our conversation about what is the organization, we are the organization that owns it. We're going to have to make decisions about how to deal with it at some point in time, sooner rather than later. So I guess I'll challenge three of you, um, at some point in time in the near future, to come and sit down with them and me and Amy and whoever else they want to bring in, uh, to talk about that too, because we are going to have to have a conversation about it going forward, whether, in principle, whether we like it or not. We've got, we've got to find something that's a path forward, all the way from maybe what would be the extreme of you fund it to a crazy amount of money, all the way to you just sell it, right? We're going to have to have a conversation about what to do and how to get it to either operate or not. So I can, I can strike it from the book, or I, I would, I would recommend we leave it and let's have a meeting, and then we can look at it at first reading, and first reading, if it's not fruitful, we can strike it.
Mayor, is it possible to make one comment? No, well, I have a lot of information on it.
And then come to some agreement before it gets back, or back to us. My recommendation is we strike it, and it forces us to have a conversation, and I don't, I'm all here to be willing to do that.
Okay, we're going to move on from that, we will strike that, and I will work to set a meeting with at least Jamie, if not two others. The. The, uh, next one is. Fire and police pension, uh, we do, Nate, did you get updated numbers?
I did not yet, no.
Okay, we do have some, uh, this was just an oversight on my part on the fire pension. We've got to input some new numbers that, um, we'll go here, we'll get that in the first reading. That's a pretty typical, um, police pension, that, that, that the numbers are updated, but no changes. Any questions on that? Okay, um, over on edit, again, we just shifted some stuff around to what is, funds are being used for. There's the matching funds for ready and for other CCNG and different fund items there. We are contributing sixty thousand to Park Road from that fund. Uh, the couple items we've been carrying for several years, no real significant change there. And then, um, down at the bottom is the Riverboat Fund, again, same thing as this year. And then the last page, page fourteen, Kevin, this does address some of the questions you had earlier. This is the airport's budget that they do submit to us for approval. You'll see there in the top one, that's with their federal, um, what, entitlement, entitlement, right?
Yeah.
So that one's not really the accurate. And then the aviation fuel is that second set there, so a hundred and fifty-four thousand a year in aviation fuel. Uh, they spend all of that mostly on fuel, I think, don't they?
Yes, and then the taxes that are the, the, for what's bought there, and then the tax, they pay the taxes off on that.
And then the next set is the operations, so I think that that's generally what's generated from hanger.
That's, that's correct.
So they made a hundred and twenty-three thousand on, um, that fund. You will see that they've added twenty-four thousand towards loan repayment out of their budget, um, there as well. And then the last little section is the, the park road fund where we put, where we deposit dollars annually, and then we're starting to pay out on that as well. Any questions? Anything that we would like to go back and review again or further discuss? Hearing none, seeing none, uh, we will, Amy and I will work with the REED Financial Group to get an update of this back to you. With the changes discussed, the first reading will be at the September meeting. That will be, it's on the schedule, the REED Financial has presented to you. So we will, uh, follow that going forward, and we'll work on getting a couple of these items updated.
How long do we think it might take to get a round back, like, post-checking, we have nine, and we'll get a chance to, like, be on the calendar, just before we, we need.
How about by the end of next week?
Yeah.
I think, I, I think I should, it, once we get it created and the updates are ready, we'll have to work on figuring out how to deal with the set the salary thing. That will maybe be slightly time consuming, or we'll figure that out. Um, and I think that's the only big change, so yeah, probably by the end of next week. Anything else?
You can add people that are for discussion.
So it'll be Jamie, Kevin, and you all. And if anybody, and if anybody else would like to meet with them independently, we're hap, I'm happy to do that too. Okay, uh, if none, take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion's been made by Mark. All those in favor, six, five, say hi.
Hi.
As opposed, thanks, everyone.
Where are you?